So, welcome to the adjourned meeting of the City Council. And, meeting is called to order. I see, is Councilmember, there she is. So, the only Councilmember we've seen missing here is Councilmember Lopez. I see Councilmember Rue, our Vice Mayor, Mayor Paul Timm, and Councilmember Martinez are present. So, let's go right into the council workshop. And who wants to lead off?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this evening, we have a presentation on the North Montclair Street Improvement Plan. And presenting for Mullen Polizoid is our consultant, Vinnyak Barn. Mr. Vin?
Gonna wait for the controls here?
Oh, you don't have the control?
No.
Here's the controller, right here.
He's gonna screen it for you right now?
Okay.
Sure. Sorry about that, I'm sorry.
We can't just advance this? Do you want us to advance it locally, here, her end?
Um, just say next, then they'll do next, I'll be right back.
Thank you. Good evening, Members of the City Council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vinnyak Barnay. I'm a principal at Mullen Polizoides. Great pleasure to be here to present the draft master plan of the, this amazing project. Next. This effort is, I just want to remind everyone, this effort is a continuation, in many ways, of a long series of projects we've been doing with you all over the past 15 years or so. The one that you see to the left is actually the update to the Montclair General Plan that we did some years ago with you. And one of the strategies that was outlined in there is the presence of a new downtown, which is the incremental transformation of the Montclair Mall. Following this, we engaged in an effort to do the Montclair Place Specific Plan, which is the drawing that you see to the top in the middle. This is the rendering that shows the eventual, long-term transformation on the mall into a new walkable downtown for you. And the part of this strategy also included the redesign and rethinking of the streets that surround the downtown immediately, specifically Moreno, Montevista, and Central. And the idea here was, while these streets carry a lot of traffic today, one of the issues that the city in its core suffers from is a massive heat island effect as well, because there's a lot of parking and a lot of asphalt. Part of this strategy was not just to create a more sustainable strategy in terms of walkability, mixed-use, but also establish a connection with a lot of amazing things that are happening in your city, including the presence of a new station, the arrival of the light rail, the construction of Montclair Village, which is actually on the way, and using Fremont as the principal north-south connector now, that establishes a direct connection from the train station down south into the downtown. So, what you see in the middle there are two renderings we had created for you about three, four years ago, where we had rethought Arrow Highway as an east-west arterial and Fremont as a north-south arterial, and reconceived them as pedestrian-friendly multimodal streets with ample trees, et cetera. And what you see at the bottom is a short rendering we had done for the Transcenter Project, which is the land around your Transit Center and around specifically, Ricton Street. The diagram to the right shows the scope of work that we are engaged in, which is the two streets, the two lines that are shown in light green is Arrow and Fremont, which are the streets we had done for you before. All the double lines in dark green show the scope of work that we are currently engaged in, which is continue this network. Arrow to the west, Montevista from north to south, all the way, from the freeway all the way to the bicycle tracks. Central to the east, Moreno, which is the northern edge of your new downtown. A little private street called La Rambla, which is a beautiful tree-lined retail street, which will happen as part of your downtown. And finally, to the north, Ricton Avenue and Huntington Drive. So, it's about six, seven streets that we are looking at in this project. Next. Thank you. And can I point?
Yes, a little red dot.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, just to run you through, I'm gonna keep this very short. We have our consultants here, David Schneider, landscape architect, and Raymond Ross from Fair and Peers, our transportation consultants, and then we'll take questions if there are any. This simply shows the basic analysis that we've done thus far. As you can see, there are six streets of different lengths that we are looking at, with Huntington being the smallest and Montevista being the longest. And what you see on the top is part of an extensive analysis that we did that establishes the idea of how these six streets play such an important role in connecting some of the most important destinations in your city right now. Next. Part of the analysis also involved understanding this in the context of the larger planning strategy that we had thought about. The drawing to the top-left shows a documentation of the tree cover, superimposed with all of the street proposals that we had made during the general plan update. So, this is the envisioned, long-term, green network of your city, that envisioned streets to be tree-lined, the trail along the water bodies and the bluff to become an open space, the cycling track to the north, and really thinking of everything north of the freeway as a verdant network of open spaces around which development can happen. The diagram to the top-right shows our understanding of the hierarchy of streets based on traffic volumes. The one to the bottom-left shows the streets as important connectors between major destinations that are happening right now, the incremental dissolution of the mall, which is a triangular side to the bottom, connected by Fremont going up to Montclair Village, which is the rectangular side that is just south of the tracks, and finally, the Transit Center Project, which we will develop shortly after this, hopefully. And then finally, the concepts, the bottom-right slide shows how there are residential uses shown in ochre color, primarily on most of the streets that we are envisioning here. The pink shows retail, that is going to be the entry into the downtown area, and the purple on Central shows commercial use, all of these as part of the general plan update. Next. So, without getting into too much detail, the last point I would establish in contextual terms is, if you look at the two circles to the top-left drawing, this is a quarter-mile radius and a half-mile radius around your train station. And what it simply says is, many of these street improvements are a crucial part of the walkability. A quarter-mile and a half-mile shed is both a bike shed and a walk shed. So, a lot of people are gonna bike and walk within these and around these streets. This is simply to say that these streets should be not just carrying traffic efficiently, not just pedestrians efficiently, but also have proper accommodation for bicycles that allow for a multimodal landscape to emerge. Next. So, what we have done is, we looked at these six streets in detail. Next, please. And this is a snapshot of how we've thought of these streets. Each street has a distinct identity that is given to it, both in terms of its section as well as its landscape. So, the trees are going to play a crucial role. You can see, at a glance, that each of these streets, some of them have wonderful pine trees that are already existing in them. Our proposal is to keep those pines. Over time, as they change and age, and new trees can be introduced. So, this is not a strategy that tends to take any of the trees away. We want to respect the mature trees that are. But the long-term vision for these streets is the way you see it, where some streets have a single tree that creates a canopy for a large length, that creates an iconic sort of seam going through. Others, whether a double rows of trees, third, whether a median, so, each street having a very distinct character, which is shown in the different colors, each of which I'll take you through in detail right now. Next. So, here is Moreno, which is the northern edge of your downtown. This is the only street among the, all the ones we are transforming here, where we are intending to change the curbs. One of the things that is a very important decision in street design is whether you want to break the existing curbs or not, because that's a very expensive thing to do. You do it only if it's truly necessary. Moreno is currently a very wide street, and one of the things we are advocating for is to narrow it down as a walkable street as it comes into the downtown area, and keep Central and Montevista as the major traffic connectors from north to south. So, what we are proposing is to take, narrow down the right-of-way from 100 feet to 101 feet, down to about 88 feet. Keep one lane of traffic on either side with sufficient turn lanes as it comes to the ends, and put a bike lane to the north. So, what you see in the section here is, south is to the left, north is to the right. You can see that the new CIM project that is being proposed in the downtown is shown to the left. These are three- and four-story buildings that's gonna make your downtown a lot dense than it is today, which has a proposal of commercial activity on the ground floor. So, to support that and allow for a walkable downtown, we're proposing angled parking to the south side of Moreno, two lanes of traffic, one turn lane in the middle, which are framed by the camphor trees, and then a bike lane, a two-way bike lane, to the north side that establishes a bike connection from east to west. Next. This is the Rambla, that is, was part of the Montclair Place Specific Plan. This was proposed as a long heart of your downtown community, with retail surrounding it. This will happen over time as the, as the Montclair Place Specific Plan emerges. And this space could be a private street or a public street, depending on how it works out. But this is one street where we are proposing a curbless street, where the, in the sort of traditional walkable streets, there are no curbs, there's no asphalt, it's a paved street, because there are a lot of other streets that will carry the traffic in the downtown. And there are four rows of sycamore trees. The advantage of doing this is, you can close down the street on weekends or on a particular weekday, and have a farmer's market, all kinds of activity, which is away from the other streets where traffic is flowing. So, this is a paved street of a completely different kind that can create a unique identity for your downtown. Next. This is Central Avenue. Central Avenue is a major traffic arterial from north to south. We are not changing the curbs of the street at all. We are keeping them exactly as they are. Most of the lineage stays in place. What we are simply doing is, either through easements, or through, where the sidewalk is a minimum of 10 feet, we're keeping the curb. Where the sidewalk is less than 10 feet, in some cases, it is 7 feet, we're proposing a strategy where, as development happens in the private realm, the private realm gives about one foot or two feet, so that you get a curb-to-property line dimension of about 10 feet, so that there can be a row of trees and a clear sidewalk that a pedestrian can walk while traffic goes through. But this is a unique street in the sense that we are using the same tree here, an elm tree, to actually create the median and the sides. So, it becomes like a mile-long, huge shaded space with the same tree going all the way through. Next. Which is quite different than what happens, to what happens on the west side of the downtown, which is Montevista, which is also a major, a major traffic arterial from north to south. The main difference here is that there are a lot of residential projects and even schools that are located along the length. So, we are not changing any of the driveways or the curbs. Again, a similar strategy with a smaller tree in the median, a long set of pine trees, which keeps the character of Montevista intact, and then through the easements, enhancing the sidewalks and making sure the sidewalks are at least 10 feet minimum, so that you have enough pedestrian action all along. Next. When we come to Arrow Highway, we are simply continuing the proposal that we had made in Arrow Highway before, which was bringing in pepper trees, but also, in the initial proposal, we had brought in palo verde trees. One of the reasons we had proposed the palo verde trees is there were these high-tension poles on the south side, the electric poles on the south side, where a canopy could only go up a particular height, so we had to keep the trees low. Because we don't have that problem here, we're proposing that the whole thing be essentially a row of pepper trees, which gives you more shade. The palo verde are usually not the most shady trees, and that's what we're trying to capture here. Next. Ricton is a street that we will develop further as we proceed into the Transcenter Design that hopefully will follow this one. But this is a unique street, because it's gonna be part of a mixed-use residential neighborhood, a transit-oriented district and neighborhood that will surround your Transcenter. But this is also a very crucial street, because it will have buses and vehicles that will bring people into the Transcenter. So, we cannot just think of it as a residential street. It has to be a residential street, on the one hand, because it will have residential development, mid-density residential development around it, but it will also be the primary route that will bring buses and a lot of cars into your Transit Center. So, what we're proposing here is to keep the lineage as it is, and our traffic consultant can talk more about it, but tame the street through a big median with a lot of different kinds of trees that you can see in this menu here, but also distinguish the street from many others by putting an alternating row of palms and canopy trees. So, Ricton becomes a very unique street in your city that's different from the others. Next. And finally, Huntington Drive, which we put in as a preliminary proposal. This is something we have to discuss with the community before we go much further, but the idea here is to take the central space that is available and make it a beautiful park with a mix of trees that brings in a lot more verdancy and a lot of sort of safe space for the people around the community. But this is something we will be looking at further after our meetings and outreach with the neighborhood there. Next. So, what I want to do very quickly is just take you through some of the work that we have done on all streets, but I'm only going to show you the amount of detail that we have done for Moreno. We have done this for every street, but today, just to show you what we're doing. So, Moreno is the, is the street that will become the gateway into your downtown. You have Montevista to the right, Central to the left in this diagram, and then Fremont, which connects the station and brings it down and drops you into Moreno. So, Moreno is the face into your downtown. It's also a potential street where, with the presence of Arrow, which can carry a lot of traffic from, from east to west, it is conceivable that Moreno is not the street that is, that is only a traffic-controlled street. It can be a street that is flexible, that can have various kinds of activities going on, and that's the way we're thinking about it. Next. So, the basic idea of Moreno, as I described, next, please, is this section, but I want to take you through some of the details without getting into the weeds here. Next. We have, we've, we have detailed as language and as initial concepts in number of ideas, the details on the trees, details on the ground cover, details on the paving, particularly at the intersections and the crosswalks, the kind of lighting that's gonna be proposed, and eventually, the street furniture. And we'll be writing about this extensively in the final report that's coming. Next. We also have significant language in terms of the pedestrian activity, the sidewalk condition that is desired here, the bicycle lanes and the nature of the bicycle lanes, including the width and the exact configuration, the exact nature of the parking, including the angle to ensure that it backs out correctly, transit stops. There are three bus stops currently. We're proposing that the central bus stop be removed and the two bus stops be consolidated at either end of the street. And finally, intersections through the use of bulb-outs and other elements to simply reduce the crossing distance on the intersections from east to west and north to south. Next. So, this, just to demonstrate to you the level of detail that we have taken this, obviously, these are not construction documents, these are just planning drawings, but over the past few months, we have studied these in significant detail. All of the lanes, all of the bus stop locations, all of the trees, every single driveway that needs to be respected, has been drawn, documented, and taken through numerous meetings with the city staff. Next. So, this is a series of drawings. You can see the rectangle at the bottom moving, that shows you a snapshot of that particular area of the street. And you can see in this drawing, the bike lane that is between the double row of pink trees, and then the angled parking that is on the south side, now looking into the commercial project that is being designed by CIM. Next. And it keeps going all the way. Next. All the way. I just want to take you through what we have done here without, you can ask us questions after this presentation. Next. Next. And you can see here, towards the eastern end, the new bus stop location, you can see the existing bus stop is the one in the red to the top. The new bus stop is shown in blue, and again, a space for the bus to stop and turn out. So, there are all these changes that have happened over the last few months. And by the way, the bus stops have to be revisited and checked with, with the authorities over the next few months, whether it's acceptable or not. So, that is still in the works. Next. Okay? Next. And the same thing has been done for Central. Next. So, the main thing, two main points on Central. The existing median has a number of important trees. Our intention in the final report is to show how those trees can remain in the early phases of the central streetscape, and over time, as the trees age or they die, how new trees can be planted to accord this streetscape for the long term. Next. Next. The last two things I would like to say is, as part of this project, two important observations were made. There are numerous locations that are shown in this drawing here in the red, where the sidewalks are less than 10 feet. They are sometimes 7 feet, they are sometimes 6 feet. This is not a particularly safe condition for a pedestrian to walk on any of these streets. So, one of the things we are suggesting and recommending is that, in these specific locations only, there be a regulation or guideline or a negotiation with the private entity to ensure some kind of easement or some kind of, of strategy whereby the sidewalk, that is the distance between the curb to the property line, which will have both the paved area for the pedestrian to walk and the green area to plant the trees, is a minimum dimension of 10 feet, so that there is substantial safety for both the pedestrian and the tree in the long term. Next. Next. The last two things I would like to say is, as part of this project, two important observations were made. There are numerous locations that are shown in this drawing here in the red, where the sidewalks are less than 10 feet. They are sometimes 7 feet, they are sometimes 6 feet. This is not a particularly safe condition for a pedestrian to walk on any of these streets. So, one of the things we are suggesting and recommending is that, in these specific locations only, there be a regulation or guideline or a negotiation with the private entity to ensure some kind of easement or some kind of, of strategy whereby the sidewalk, that is the distance between the curb to the property line, which will have both the paved area for the pedestrian to walk and the green area to plant the trees, is a minimum dimension of 10 feet, so that there is substantial safety for both the pedestrian and the tree in the long term. Next. One of the things that also came out as a result of the project's detail is that there are a number of curbs and driveways that are currently feeding various parcels and businesses that are active on every street. And what we have done is, you can see all the arrows point them out. We are not touching them in the early phases of the design, they will stay exactly the way they are, but the, the location of the trees has been worked out in such a way that as, over time, new development comes in and these driveways dissolve, as and how they do, the new trees that can be planted, can be planted in such a way that we can get as continuous a rhythm along that street. One of the things that happens across streets is, once you have driveways, the rhythms can break, and it often looks like an afterthought, you know, why did this tree all of a sudden plant here? So, we've tried our best to make sure that the rhythm of the trees is as equal as it can. So, all the, in these drawings, all the trees that you see that are not colored, they're just shown as black circles, are trees that will happen in the future as and how those driveways go away. Next. And finally, phasing. This is a proposal for how this may be phased. You would begin with Moreno and Central, both north and south of Moreno, because these are the most important streets that talk about the immediate access into the development that CIM is doing to the northeast of the Montclair Mall transformation. You will follow then with Montevista. Ricton will follow as part of the Transcenter Project, and Huntington and the Arrow Highway Extension will remain as the last ones. And finally, the Rambla, which is inside the Montclair Place Specific Plan, can happen at any point. Next. So, I'll stop there, and we have our consultants here, we can take any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, have any questions? I have no speaker request here. Anybody have a question, comments, or anything?
Am I too late?
You're here about this item here? This is technically...
This is not the meeting?
This is not, this is not the City Council meeting, no. This is a workshop. All right. So, I don't have any, Councilmember Rue?
I do have a lot of questions. I will try to distill them into something that's workable. First of all, when I'm hearing about Montevista and Central, these are major north-south streets. This is how people move through town.
Okay.
I'm hearing bicycle lanes. Are any of you here, anybody in this room, able to bicycle from Montevista and Phillips to the MetroLink Station? It's gonna be impossible to do. I mean, somebody could do it, but it would take probably two hours, with inclement weather. We have major north-south streets that move people to the MetroLink Station. So, now we're talking about making it, these are already congested streets, making them more congested by narrowing them. What are alternative routes, then?
Transportation that's out there.
I'm just asking a question, because if I'm projected to look out at this, somebody's traveling north or south right now on these streets, they're congested enough as it is. You narrow them or do things to make them look more narrow, how is somebody supposed to move through town? I don't care who answers that.
Does anybody have? You have a...
Uh, technology.
Steve Brown. Is Steve Brown there?
Steve, are you able to answer?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
About the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, hi. Steve Brown, my colleague, Raymond's in the audience. We, we're transportation engineers, a part of the team, and consistent with the general plan, we're not proposing to reduce the number of lanes on either of those streets. And the, the changes would not in any way reduce the capacity of those streets. So, the, the vision is to, is to be realistic about the need to maintain those key north-south streets for vehicular traffic flow, and add, add an environment where it's also more comfortable to bicycle or, or walk, but not, not to the detriment of the vehicular traffic.
Okay, thank you, because that's a concern I have.
But just, just for clarification, Central remains three lanes, north-south, and Montevista remains, it's two lanes, north-south. No changes there.
No.
I think the only change is Moreno Avenue, if I'm correct. That's the only one that's gonna have a lane reduction, if I'm correct. Thank you.
The question I have is in regard to Moreno and Arrow. Are you proposing to narrow Arrow Highway? No. So, it will remain, because one of the difficulties right now, I use Arrow every day to go to work. I have for 22 years. I grew up in town. Arrow's been a major part of my life when I commuted to University of Laverne. It's already very congested. You know, there are no alternatives to an east-west street. I realize what most cities, I'm not saying this one, what most cities would like is for everybody to use the freeway. It's not possible. It's congested enough as it is, and it's only going to get worse. So, when I look at east-west streets, I start to think, how do we move traffic through there? If we narrow Moreno, which is another major east-west street, then we're putting that traffic somewhere else. Where does that Moreno traffic go?
Steve, the question is about slowing down Moreno. Do you want to answer that question?
If you, if you cut down Moreno, where does that east-west traffic go?
Yeah. We have a very sophisticated computer model that was used for the general plan and used for this effort, which looks at the long-term traffic demand on all these streets. And we're able to convince ourselves first, and then also, the city staff and others, that the amount of demand to use Moreno Street can be accommodated with one lane in this direction and a center turn lane. So, it, it's not going to push traffic anywhere else. It, the design is intended to accommodate the, what is envisioned long-term for the traffic demand there, as well as Arrow. And no changes on, and the capacity on Arrow would remain as it is today.
Because I'm always concerned when we start to push traffic onto another street. Moreno is also a major east-west street. It's what people use. It's also an access to our mall. Whether we want to think about it that way or not, it is the access to the mall. And just because people with a lot of, high income will be able to live there, you know, doesn't mean we should change things that much. People need to have access to that mall. They need to get there for their jobs. So, I'm just a little concerned. And when, when I look long-term at some of this, I'm going to ask the question I asked in 2018, when we had a roundtable, that city in the... Many cities... Many cities across the globe would start, are, have been using demand lights. I don't care what other cities in this region use, I really don't. Are we planning as part of this to put in demand lights, which will move the traffic much more efficiently?
Can you, I, I'm not sure either what demand lights is.
Demand lights are the, they're, they're not, uh, set to a regional standard in the sense the way ours are now. What they do is, and I think you're aware of them, they are, they call them smart lights in some of the areas. They automatically sense how many cars are going in each direction. So let's say it's 2:00 in the morning. There's nobody going north and south, and everybody's going east and west. The east and west lights stay green, the north-south are red. When it starts to sense a car coming, it will automatically shut down the east-west lanes to red, let the north-south go to green, move that car through, and then cycle back. So you don't have people backed up. There's an awful lot of dwell time at the lights the way they are. And across the globe, when they've used smart lights or demand lights, they seem to move traffic much more efficiently and they reduce auto accidents. So I'm just wondering if that's going to be a part of it. And again, I don't care what the county standard is, I don't care what other cities use, we need to go up what works here. And because of where we are as a city, our people do move into another county and another county moves in here.
I'll try to answer that question. So as we are, um, changing or making improvements to these roadways, uh, part of that is to install fiber, which is going to provide the connection to, uh, between each signal. And we will, we will have synchronized signals, if you will, that will do what you're asking. And each of these intersections also will require a traffic signal modification because we are changing the radii of the curves, so that will require us to change the, the signal or make modifications and we can perhaps make those upgrades to our signals.
Because I think it, it, that's important to move the traffic through. If anybody drives as much as I do, when I can put up to as much as 30,000 miles a year on my car for work, I see the problems. Um, we're dealing also in the world with these new restarting cars or whatever they are. They cause a backup in traffic because it takes that extra half second. And yes, people should be patient and I hear, oh, it's just an extra minute, but 30 extra minutes is another 30 minutes. And one of the reasons you see increase in traffic problem is because people are being, you know, backed up. You can't change driver habits, but we can't change how we move traffic. So I'm thinking as we do this, if we can start to look at that, um, I'm just, I'm going to have to read through this, I'm very, very hesitant on it because I'm very concerned with anything that's going to, uh, cause more congestion or cause more problems for people who are already driving. A lot of people can't use mass transit to go to work. I'm one of them that, sometimes I can, but most of the time I can't, because I have a lot of meetings out of my office or a lot of distance I have to travel. And it wouldn't be possible always by mass transit. Do I use it for other things? Yes. But my, my normal work commute would be almost virtually impossible because when I get to my office, I have meetings outside my office as well. So we have to start thinking of the people for whom mass transit is not always the option, and they need to move through these streets. It is, we are not an isolated community. We're a community that's in the middle of a major, really a major metropolitan area. So these north-south and east-west streets are the way people get to work, to school and to commute, and bicycles are great. But we also need to realize, I don't think a lot of people are going to commute from, you know, Mo- as I said, Montevista and Phillips to the Metrolink Station. I just don't see somebody taking a bicycle. There may be a few. They certainly wouldn't be able to walk, run, jog, skateboard, rollerblade or anything else unless it's a weekend activity because it would take way too long. So that, that's primarily my question. Thank you.
Okay. I think, great, thank you very much.
Mayor, it does look like we have one speaker.
One speaker? Okay. We do have a public comment on this, on the agenda, so I'll allow this portion of the agenda to be, uh, public comment. So, uh, looks like we have one speaker. Bruce, you want to make a comment? You have five minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Most of what Councilman Roux said is pretty much wrong. Uh, we do need road diets in our streets, you know, these north-south, people are not going to try to bicycle from Phillips to the train station. That's a ridiculous statement, you know, and he knows it, but, um, people might want to take the bus from Phillips up to the train station and then get on the gold line to go east and west. Okay? There are about 90% of people who drive right now that can take public transa- transit. That reduces the amount of traffic going through the city and allows us to reduce the size of these streets, allows us to put bike lanes in near a tra- this is a transit-oriented center. The whole purpose that you, Councilman Roux and everybody else put into this was to allow people to walk, bike and use public transit in this north Montclair area. So, you know, to do that, you got to make these, these, uh, basic small freeways that people are too scared to walk around in and bicycle in. You got to make them narrower, you got to reduce the amount of traffic. People need to get out of the cars. If they can't bike, then they need to get on a bus. And they need to get up to the transit center where they can get to their jobs. It's not that hard. There's first mile, last mile plans in place to get, uh, you know, you can use, I've got a scooter that I use all over north Montclair. Uh, people have electric bikes now, so they don't have to put a lot of effort into, uh, you know, getting themselves bicycled or on a bus. If we can increase mass tra- bus transit in the city, then that gets them up to the transit center. But these are good plans for people to utilize. Uh, we need, obviously Central Avenue needs to be a large, uh, highway to get north and south. I know you want to use Arrow Highway as your own personal freeway, Mr. Roux, for getting to and back from work, but you know what? Share the road with us cyclists and our scooter riders and our walkers and things like that. Um, for the, you know, there's a many of us here in north Montclair that prefer to have these roads narrowed, and you need to, you know, represent us in what we want. So I appreciate your comments, but, um, you know, when the gold line comes through, uh, many thousands of residents are going to be in north Montclair looking to find an easy alternative to using their car to get up to the transit center and get on the gold line, which you've been pushing for many years. And we need the ability to use our bikes, go up Montevista, park and get on the train and take, take us to our jobs. So this is an excellent plan. We need more, uh, I personally would like to see more, uh, bicycle lanes on Montevista. And, uh, it doesn't look like that's in the plan, but at least it's on Moreno and possibly Fremont, which would be helpful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't want to think we have any public, other members of the public wants to speak, so any more comments by councilmembers? I, I just will say this, that, uh, I think the plans overall are pretty good. Um, it's nice to know that, uh, we're advancing ourselves in north Montclair in terms of, of our, our goals or, you know, what our vision is for the city. So it's nice to see the plans, uh, how they're being developed as, as you move forward. So where do we go next on this, Ed? Or, I don't know, what's that? Obviously, the consultants are going to finish up this document here, and I do believe that we're getting ready to move forward on both on Moreno and Central are going to be the next two phases, am I correct, Ed? By back-to-back?
Well, we, we do need to finish meeting with the consultant on the finalization of the plans.
Right.
This is, this is near completion, maybe 90%, but we still need to have some additional discussion related to some concerns that we have and certainly things that we've heard expressed here tonight. And of course, we need to go into, uh, the engineering development side of it to get those plans ready to move forward. As to what will go first will depend on a number of factors. Uh, right now in relation to C I M and the project that they're planning, uh, we need to continue to discuss with them what their intent is in relation to potentially acquiring eminent domain in that area. Uh, if, uh, that is going to continue to be their issue, then there's going to be a lot of construction going on Moreno, uh, particularly with relocation of utilities. Um, and obviously, as you know, the council's already approved Fremont and Arrow Highway. Uh, those two streets could move sooner than some of the other streets.
True.
Uh, Montevista Avenue, uh, is also a street, as well as Central Avenue, that we can focus on earlier, but again, a lot is related to the development, uh, with the first project at C I M. Uh, the Huntington Drive section, of course, depends on working with the developer Tramo Crow for that particular site. Uh, they will obviously assume a lot of the costs related to that particular street. And Ricton Street is far out into the future, uh, in relation to us developing a site plan for development of housing in that area. So, uh, a number of these streets simply depend on other factors that are outside of our control at this time, and we will keep the council updated as we move forward.
Yeah. Okay. Well, overall, the concept I'm good with. Any more comments to my left here? No? No? Okay. And I, and I think as far as traffic circulation, and I think that's a valid point brought up by Councilmember Roux, but we are going to open up, uh, Huntington Drive eventually. That'll take it towards, uh, Mills Avenue from Montevista Avenue. And then I do believe part of the concept too is when the Montclair Place gets redeveloped, um, that the, the traffic circulation itself will allow for, uh, circulation from Montevista or Central back and forth as well, uh, going to La Rambla or going, going up to Fremont. So we're, we're going to help improve, improve this, that will help improve circulation north Montclair, I'm assuming. So with that, if nobody has any comments, then I'll adjourn this portion of the meeting and we'll come back at 7:00 for the regular council meeting. Thank you.